Appreciate everybody coming out for our new earlier start times. Seven o'clock instead of seven forty-five. And so we will now move to item three on the agenda spotlight, Kendall Kindness Initiative. Ms. Keys.
Thank you, Mr. Lyons. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our spotlight section of our agenda for Tuesday, April 21st, 2015. Tonight, we will be spotlighting Kendall Kindness Challenge. Today, the Board of Ed honors the teachers, staff, and students of Kendall Elementary School for their participation in the Great Kindness Challenge. A global program, Kendall joined more than 4,000 schools across 45 countries in this challenge. The Kindness Challenge program is designed to increase tolerance, unity, as well as respect for all. Kendall's participation in the Great Kindness Challenge was part of the citizenship and anti-bullying programs. During the challenge, students devoted their time to performing as many acts of kindness as possible, as well as participating in a variety of events. Kendall students joined in the program with great enthusiasm, with every student being involved. Throughout the week, messages of kindness and words of encouragement were posted on doors, as well as walls, hallways, and even the fence around the school. Messages that stated "You're special," "You're amazing" were just a few of the uplifting phrases circulating throughout the school. Kindness activities were not just limited to individual classrooms. The Kendall library featured books highlighting kindness. Lessons in gym, art, and music reinforced this theme. Students learned a song about kindness and created a variety of artwork. A celebration was held at the end of the week that featured a video with positive messages from all of the students. In addition to kindness activities within the school, Kendall's efforts also helped within our community. Students collected canned goods, which were donated to Norwalk's Open Door Shelter, as well as a coin collection, which generated $600 cash, and we donated that, or the school donated that, to the shelter. Congratulations to Principal Toni Dietriel, to members of the school's kindness committee who helped organize the observance, and especially the students of Kendall Elementary School. We here as a board are very proud of your work in creating a culture of kindness at your school at Kendall. What we'd like to do, before we bring anybody up, Kendall does have a video, and I believe, Ralph, if you can put that on for everyone?
Kindness is...
Love.
Love!
Love.
Kindness is caring for other people.
Kindness is...
Power.
Power!
Power, baby!
Kindness is only a power to turn people into...
Kindness is...
Free.
Free.
Three.
It doesn't cost anything.
Nothing.
We can offer it.
Kindness is friendship.
This is the kindness part of the same thing, towards giving us kindness and then we make them friends.
Kind people have more friends than meaningful people.
Kindness is...
Magic.
Magic.
Kindness is treating the world.
The world.
Kindness is treating somebody the way you want to be treated.
Kindness comes in every language. It's universal.
To be kind is to say "I'm gladly."
C'est la mode.
Cause you know, you know.
Je t'chévois chèste, on t'a dit "ai."
J'attends ça.
Don't matter si...
It's a risk.
Kindness is contagious.
Contagious.
Catches on really fast.
Kindness is something else.
Say please.
Say thank you.
Say I'm sorry.
Smiling.
Tell people you care about them.
Say hi to people.
Hi.
Oh, bless you.
I'm nice to look at you.
Kindness is something else. Trying to...
Candle.
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 Kindness is...
That was a great video. Really, really nice. We would like to have a couple people come up. Any students, are any students here tonight from Kendall? Awesome. What is your name?
No.
Oh, he's not from Kendall. Okay, we have a student here, that's okay. What school are you from?
No.
Awesome, that's great. All right, so we have a few representatives from Kendall, and we have a certificate, and we want to thank you so much for all that you've done in regards to the Great Kindness Challenge. If we have Rudy here, great, if you can come up. And we have Julie Rakowitz and Dr. Jeffrey Beckley. All right, that's fine, come on up.
Shaking hands.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ralph.
Well done.
Thank you.
Thank you so much to Kendall again for coming out.
Thank you. All right, next item on the agenda is public comments. Over to you, Mr. Kassinas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Public comments section, when I call your name, please come up to the podium. You will have three minutes. Please give us your name and your address for the record. When, I will time you, like I said, you'll have three minutes. When it's 30 seconds left, I will wave my hand. At that point, we ask that you close, and at three minutes, you need to be done, so... And please keep your comments civil. First, we have Mr. Millian.
Bruce Millian, Nine Mott Avenue, Norwalk Federation of Teachers. At your desk this evening, each of you has a copy of an article that was run by the American Federation of Teachers. Many of you have been present to the presentations, and the title is Connecticut Early Literacy Program Wins Wide Acclaim. This particular article, after the last event, basically went all over the country, and a lot of people have seen it and given input as well. We want to make sure that you were aware of what was written, and several of you were at this particular event, and there's some quotes in here, in particular from Mike Lyons and I believe Bob Duff as well, plus some parents and their children who were in attendance also. So I just wanted to make you aware of it, you have a copy of it, and it brings the positives to Norwalk, which we really like for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have, I believe it's Ed Abrams.
Good evening. Ed Abrams, 20 Morgan Avenue here in Norwalk, Connecticut. I am also the president of the Norwalk High School Marching Bears Incorporated, our parent association for the band. I wanted to take a few moments this evening to make the board aware of some very recent accomplishments by the music program at Norwalk High School. Over the last two weeks, both the Color Guard and the Winter Percussion Units competed in the World Championships in Dayton, Ohio. During this time, the Color Guard finished ninth in the country out of 45-plus groups, and the Winter Percussion Unit finished with a bronze medal at the event. I want to bring this to the attention of the board because these organizations and these groups of children represent Norwalk in our full and foremost capabilities. They are as diverse as we are as a community, both demographically and sociographically and economically. This is a group of students who worked extremely hard, spent a lot of time and effort to raise the money to join these programs, and I wanted to ensure that the board was aware of the fact that yet again, these children ran out and represented our city in a way that was superior and garnered exceptional comments from every single organization that we ran into. And I want to make sure you understand that they represent Norwalk in every way we want Norwalk represented, both in terms of our professionalism and in terms of the community and the diversity that is our community. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Dawn Calley.
Hi. If you wouldn't mind, just pass down. I want to take one of the next ones. Hello. My name is Dawn Calley, 320 Highland Avenue, and they're passing around my son's report card. My son, Adam, right here, he's in fourth grade at Brookside Elementary School. He's a really smart kid, and he knows it. And I have very high expectations of him, and he knows it. So when he came home with that report card, it's a little disappointing, but it's not disappointing, because he's a wonderful student, and he did really well, and according to his teacher, his parent-teacher conference, he is absolutely wonderful and doesn't have any real deficiencies in any subject area. But looking at that report card, you see a lot of twos. And from what I understand, from the letter that went out on the first report card, twos mean that the area, the subject area has not been finished being addressed, okay? According to this report card, now, because I have very high expectations of Adam, a two tells me two different things according to that. Either he is working, not meeting standard, or he's working towards something that hasn't finished yet, and I don't know the difference. So, when I talk to him about his report card, which we spend a lot of time doing, I don't know where to tell him that he needs improvement, does he need improvement, and my husband, who is absolutely unreasonable, goes crazy over a two. So I need to know, and my husband needs to know, and pretty much everybody needs to know, what their report cards mean, and that really doesn't tell me, having a two. So if anybody here knows what a two, the difference between a two and a two is, you could tell me. Or if you don't, you could get back to me.
Chairman, may I address the speaker?
Certainly.
I have a daughter at Cranberry, she's in kindergarten. I had the same kind of experience...
Yeah, I've got a kindergarten one there, too.
I had the same kind of experience that you did. I sat with her teacher at length, and, you know, it's a new system, it's going to take time to get used to what all this means.
I'm not complaining about the system, I'm a common core, I'm not here to argue about that, but I just...
I'll just share with you what I had gone through.
Yeah.
And, you know, it makes sense, it's tough to get used to, sure, you know, but at this point in your child's academic career, he doesn't need to worry about getting a 4.0. We're just trying to get him ready for fifth grade.
I realize that, but I still would like to know the difference between a two and a two. And there's got to be some way to indicate that on the report card.
Agreed, there could be tweaks and maybe better communication from the schools on this, if it's something...
And it's, I don't know.
...the board can look into. It's new.
It could be something just on the report card, an asterisk that says, it's, this is this kind of two, and this is that kind of two.
I will say for Adam, fours are outstanding. My daughter only had one four.
He's got a lot of fours, but he's got a lot of twos, too.
Yeah.
And so my husband, going back to the unreasonableness of my husband, had a really long talk with Adam, and he can't be convinced that it's not a wonderful report card.
Yeah, it's going to take getting used to. You know, I go back to Silvermine, where I got, you know, all As and one B. What's the, you know, it was a little more, you know, it's what we were used to. You got As, you got a B.
Right.
Everybody knows what that means. This is a little different, it's kind of charting progress, where they are, where they need to get to, to get to, in your son's case, fifth grade, so...
So I'm just making a suggestion that maybe you want to think about the difference between a two and a two. Some indication. I mean, I understand what you're, but you're saying exactly what I'm saying, and I, it needs to be different, so, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Chairman.
Next, we have Ms. Sue Heaney.
Hi, Sue Heaney, 7 Christopher Lane, Norwalk, Connecticut. An update on Literacy for Parents for Their Children. Literacy for Parents for Their Children is the parent outreach program that Norwalk Public Schools knows nothing about. Contrary to the press releases, that would make you believe that there's been collaboration between Norwalk Public Schools and the NFT. Norwalk Public Schools did not collaborate, actually, it looks like they capitulated and did so during an interim period when no one was watching. Knowledge is power, and the NFT's Literacy for Parents for Their Children program has deliberately limited the information available to parents and the community. Why would M-Class Reading 3D, Little Running Men reports not be explained to parents in detail at these sessions? Why were no early literacy and K-5 experts and advocates who work right here in Norwalk not part of the design of this parent outreach program? Are parents at Title I schools not deserving of high-quality vetted programs? Is that equity? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Adam Cal.
My name is Adam Cal. I live on 320 Highland Avenue, and I'm here to talk about we needing more books for the advanced and the not-so-advanced reading sections at the, all the schools in Norwalk, and also to like, to, for you to make the Wi-Fi better, because sometimes we have to do reports at school, and we can't do them because the Wi-Fi is not working. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Mr. John Mosby.
Good afternoon, board. My name is John Mosby. I live at 15 Allison Avenue, Norwalk, Connecticut. I would like to say tonight, very briefly, that I'm very proud that things look like it's done quieten down a little bit now. I'm really happy to see that. Also, I want to say to the board that I did meet with the superintendent, and me and him had a good little conversation in his office, and I told him a good history about Norwalk. And I have spoke to the public, and everybody knows me, I'm not a guy that start trouble. I went to a lot of events, and the people say, "Mr. Mosby, we know where your heart is, and you're a good man." But I want to say to the Board of Education, and I want to say it to the press, Mr. Connelly and Nancy, you don't know what you put in that paper, have you heard my family? What y'all put in the paper, a lot of times, it's nothing but lies. And I'm getting a little sick and tired of it. Where you talk about my daughter, and you never get the facts, and you ask the question, why do we don't come to you? Because you don't print the truth. You're always putting something in there, making us look bad. You've been attacking my daughter like a dog for doing her job, and I'm a stand-up hero. She don't need no help, she got her dad here. And what I don't like is when you put in the paper about didn't give the freedom, and if you over there, sir, you say that you didn't get a response back from my daughter before you went to, you lied, because you did, and I got the document here. Also, Mr. Tomati wrote to the, states say she didn't respond, that was a lie you told, and I got the document, she to prove it, right here in my hand, and y'all lied to the Labor Board. And I'm going to tell you what's going on in this country, it's a big money. And I'm going to tell you, we headed to a disaster in this country if you don't start looking out for the poor people. And my job to look out for the poor people in this country, all over the country. You see that man went on, went on that airplane, he want to help the poor people in this country. Yeah, the rich people getting everything, but our children, the poor kids, black, white, and all are not getting, and that's what my job here. And I want to say to the, I wait for you all to copy this here, what I'm, if you want to sue me, go on and sue it. Another thing I want to say about this thing about you put in the paper about, I say 5,000, and I'm going to be real quick, 5,000 kids was not true. That's a lie. Because even when I was in the schools for 30 years, we had 30 schools. We had 16,000 kids. We had 6,000 blacks. We had about 8,000 whites. We only had a few, he's standing. We had 30 schools. This, this building here was a school. So let's get the thing straight when you come in there, he don't know what he talking about. McGrath was a school. Nathaniel Italy, Roosevelt, Fitz, St. Paul River, Nathan Hill, I mean, not Nathan Hill, Nathaniel Italy, Fitz over there, all those was schools we had. So I want to say to you all, I'm going to stick by my daughter, I'm going to stick by my daughter, because she telling the truth and doing her job, and all of those...
Mr. Mosby.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that's all we have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Question first, Ralph, could you, you know, the young gentleman raised a question about some problems that we've had with our Wi-Fi. Could you just quickly update on what those problems were and what we've been doing to clear them up?
Yeah. So, one of the things is we've activated, the fact that we put in Wi-Fi in the last year and a half, we've expanded our capacity to be able to offer, excuse me, we've expanded our ability to offer students the ability to bring in devices for us to be able to use the 5,000 Chromebooks we just deployed. In that process, one of the things that we're starting to realize over time is that we're tweaking the system as we move forward. We did have a little bit of an issue with, we get our internet connection through the CEN, which is Connecticut Education Network, and it, I mean, not to get technical, but it was like a denial of service issue that we ended up, once we ended up correcting that, that ended up clearing up a lot of our Wi-Fi issues that we had in town. We're still testing, and we're still testing the Wi-Fi as we move forward. It's, one of the things that we've done for the Smarter Balance Assessment timeframe is, we noticed that we were actually having a lot of mobile devices that were being attached to the Wi-Fi, so we've actually turned that ability off for the next couple of weeks to make sure that actually the testing environment actually works well, and that we actually can deliver the Smarter Balance Assessment the same way that we did last year. So we are looking, you know, we're trying to improve it as we move forward on a regular basis, and I'm pretty sure that if you check in the next couple of weeks, you probably should be getting a better experience than you were in the month of January, which is really when it kind of got bad. So, yeah, you're very welcome, definitely. And like I said, any feedback and stuff, we're always working on that with the students and, excuse me, with the schools, and making sure that we're trying to get feedback on where we need to improve, but the system's growing, and we're going to continue, it's going to be a couple of years, you'll see in the three-year tech plan, some of the other enhancements that we're going to make. One of the biggest ones is going from a 1-gig backbone to a 10-gig backbone, which is what we need to do within the next three years.
Okay, right, good. Thank you. Ms. Rivas?
Yes, is it possible to somehow notify the parents at the schools and stating, "Well, we're having certain issues with the Wi-Fi," and just keep everyone up to date as to what's going on, so people do not think it's just not working?
Yes.
And when is it going to be repaired? And is this happening at all of our schools, and is it only elementary, middle, high school, everything?
Well, it's not happening anymore. It's actually not happening anymore. So, I mean, we were having issues back in a few months ago and stuff, and it was going on progressively, intermittently, throughout the district. Once I said we had that correction from the CEN, that corrected a lot of the issues. We also have cut off some access right now for the Smarter Balance, as we're still tweaking it, so, just, the system's working. All network devices that we have currently that we own, so those 5,000 Chromebooks, all connect perfectly fine on the system.
So the only things that are not connecting would be like, sort of these kind of smartphone and personal smartphone?
Exactly, so if someone's bringing in a device that's not connecting to it. So, we've set the system up to allow that to happen, but we've actually just turned it off because we want to make sure that our bandwidth is appropriate for the Smarter Balance testing, so...
Yes, is it possible next time just to advise the board and let us know if there is a situation where there's something not working correctly and it has to be tweaked, whatever, further down the line going forward?
Yeah, oh, no, definitely.
Shoot out an email and say, "Well, these schools are having, having issue," or...
Yeah.
So that we're aware of there's a problem.
Yeah, and you know what I should do also is actually work with Brenda. We can even put it up on the Facebook, Twitter accounts, if there's any issues. That may be a quicker way, too, to get it out to everybody immediately, say it's like, "Look, we're having," you know, if we are having an issue, but, you know, knock on wood, we're actually in very good shape. I'm looking forward to actually starting the Smarter Balance Assessments tomorrow, so...
Okay, wonderful, thank you.
Was there a question? Yeah, Mike?
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, I've been in a lot of schools, and I'm usually, as you know, my laptop, and I have to say, I've always been really surprised how good the internet connection is in a lot of places, and that there are, just like here in this building, there are different networks, so there's, you know, you have the NPS guest and so forth, so it's very easy for the, these, you know, phones and outside devices to get kicked off the network because of the way it was designed, which I think is really smart.
Yes, definitely, definitely. And like I said, we actually had even conversations earlier tonight about the idea of updating policies and making sure that as a system, we really just need to move forward in a variety of areas. Technology's moving very quickly, and sometimes it can get ahead of you. One thing that we've done is we've made sure that we put in the correct infrastructure, but as you put in a new infrastructure and stuff, there's always tweaking that we're going to have to do, and changes that are going to have to be made, so...
Okay.
One last question, I'm sorry with that. When you walk in, because Mr. Barbers just mentioned, when you walk in with your laptop, do you have to sign on with a password? Is it secure?
Yes.
Anyone that goes in there, like a parent is sitting in the waiting area and wants to check something, are they going to have access to the Wi-Fi, or is it that they will need to answer, enter a security code or something?
So it'll, it'll actually depend, and once again, right now, it's off till we finish the Smarter Balance testing. Once that mid-May timeframe comes and we've gotten done with this K-8 testing, what'll happen is you'll see a couple of different networks. There's one that's called BYOD, which students, or if you have an access code, whenever you log on to your email, and that password will allow you to log on to the system. If you don't have that, you cannot log on. There is a guest network that we have as well, too, that does not touch our network. It's kind of like going to Starbucks, so you have a very minimal bandwidth, it's not, we don't put a lot of bandwidth towards that, but it does allow for parents to come in if they need to check their email or anything else, so they do have access. They would use the guest network, but, once again, it's going to be a couple of weeks before we want to turn that back on.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ralph.
Sure.
All right, next item is superintendent's report, Mr. Connelly.
Good evening. I have a couple of things to report, and the good things that have happened to our percussion group and our Color Guard in Dayton, I was going to report that, but I was, someone beat me to it, but it's important that you know the, these real successes that our youngsters are having. First thing I'd like to report on is the After the Bell program, which we're conducting in cooperation with the South Norwalk Community Center. Two board meetings ago, you did approve a transfer of funds, so this program could operate this year because we came up short with the availability of Title I federal funds. I'm pleased to report that the program will begin on May 4th, about two weeks from yesterday, and will continue through the rest of the school year. Right now, we have 62 children from the South Norwalk community are enrolled in the program. More than 115 students applied, so obviously, supply and demand is, there is demand, and we can only supply so much. The transportation is being provided from each of the eligible schools to the program. Right now, there was concern about where we were going to go next year, and the staff is working diligently to make sure that we do have a continuation of this program, we're just not stopping at the end of this school year, and we are working to try to make some program design changes, so that perhaps we can get full eligibility for this program from Title I. Right now, we're funding it through local funds that, that the board transferred, as well as after-school funds from the Priority School Grant. So, as we take a look at the size of the program, we're also trying very, very hard to make sure that we can get this, that we continue, we can continue the program at the level that it is now, and even expand it, but at the same time, we're trying to do it in such a way that the program will be funded by a variety of grants. So right now, our challenge is to see if we can't design the program so it would... in cooperation with the South Norwalk Community Center. Two board meetings ago, you did approve a transfer of funds so this program could operate this year because we came up short with the availability of Title I federal funds. I'm pleased to report that the program will begin on May 4th, or two weeks from yesterday, and will continue through the, the rest of the school year. Right now, we have 62 children from the South Norwalk community are enrolled in the program. More than 115 students applied. So obviously, supply and demand is, there is demand and we can only supply so much. The transportation is being provided from each of the eligible schools to the program. Right now, there, there was concern about where we were gonna go next year, and the staff is working diligently to make sure that we do have a continuation of this program. We're just not stopping at the end of this school year. And we are working to try to make some program design changes so that perhaps we can get full eligibility for this program from Title I. Right now, we're, we're funding it through local funds that, that the board transferred as well as after-school funds from the priority school grant. So, as we take a look at the size of the program, we're also trying very, very hard to make sure that we can get this, that we continue, we can continue the program at the level that it is now and even expand it, but at the same time, we trying to do it in such a way that the program will be funded by a variety of grants. So right now, our challenge is to see if we can't design the program so it would be fully eligible to use Title I funds in the, in the 15, 16 school year. But there were a lot of obstacles and, you know, it's starting late, but it's starting, and I see it as, obviously, the need is there, and I think the quality of the program will speak for itself. And my hope is during that first week of May, the first week the program is fully open, we'll, we'll have some kind of open house, and we'd like to invite the board and the public to observe the program at that time. The second thing is, again, it's our stints to do this, it's not us, it's not the, it is that the Kevin Eadit Memorial Scholarship Fund awarded $100,000 to, this year, to Kimberly Devine. This is a prestigious, prestigious scholarship. It's $100,000 and they've been, it's been awarded to 19 high school students since Kevin, since Kevin Ead passed away in 1997. So at, at some point, I'd like to bring Kimberly Devine, this year's recipient, to the board so she could be recognized for her accomplishment as well as to thank the Scholarship Fund for their commitment to Norwalk students. Kimberly, I won't give you my choice, but, or my, but she's been accepted at Con College, she's been accepted at Fairfield U, she's been accepted at Holy Cross, she's been accepted at James Madison in Virginia, at Providence College, at UConn, at University of Mary Washington, and at Trinity College in Hartford. So, it's a hard choice. There's some really outstanding, outstanding places there. The other finalists for the scholarship included Olivia, Olivia DeMarco, Danny La, and Quinn Robinson. So obviously, our, our, their congratulation goes to Kimberly, but I think also the other three finalists who made it that far also deserve our congratulations. And we'll make some kind of presentation to the board probably at the next meeting or, or later meeting. The thought issue and, well, as already was reported on, and that's the, the prizes that our, our students came back, the, the winter percussion group and our Norwalk High School color guard, who were both finalists and winners at the, at the competition in Dayton, Ohio. And lastly, it's not on, it's, it's not on the agenda, but I, what I would like to do probably at the next board meeting is just talk a little bit about the process that I feel that the board ought to undertake as we take a look at the whole issue of student activity fees and, and fees to play sports as well as to be involved in other activities. I, I, there's a process that I would recommend that this board adopt and follow. It has some timelines on it, and it's more than just, it's more than just adjusting the budget for the, for the 15, 16 school year and removing that item. I think there's a whole process that, hate to put more work on you, but it starts with the policy committee, and I'm hopeful that we can start it early in the coming school year. And hopefully, whatever decisions the policy committee, or recommendation they're gonna make to the full board, they really need to be made by late November, early December because if there is a, if you're gonna recommend some kind of fee, that has to be part of the budget that the board would be adopting in, in December. So, I, I'd just like to go through all of that with the board and, and hopefully as a staff, as long as I'm here, get some research done for you so you're not starting with a blank slate, you know, come, you know, come late summer, early fall. And the last thing, I know we're going to recognize that the Week of the Young Child, which is next week, I'd just like to encourage as many people as possible to participate in the program, and if your schedule permits it, the Young Child, the Young Child Committee is still looking for people to read to the students. It takes about 45 minutes of your time, and the readings take place, a variety of, of classes that we have for young children. I'm going to be reading at the Housing Authority's Head Start Program at Ben Franklin next week. But I encourage as many people in the community as possible to, to come out, to read, and really to underscore our commitment to early education and literacy for young children.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Connolly. All right. Well, next move to item six, actions. First item is the Consent Calendar, which is item 62A, Approval Personnel, 62B, Approval of Budget Transfer. It's the motion to approve the Consent Calendar. Ms. Mousse, is there a second? Ms. Key, seconds.
I'd like to remove something from the question.
Ms. Rivas, yes?
For budget transfers?
Okay, Ms. Rivas says removing budget transfers? Both of them?
Yes.
All?
Yes.
Okay. That leaves just the approval of personnel and consent calendar. If there's no other changes, we'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the consent calendar on the personnel items, please indicate. And that is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Next item is Approval of Budget Transfer. There's an explanation to this in the packet. It's a total of $458,000. Chair would obtain a motion to approve the transfer. Ms. Mousse, is there a second? Ms. Rivas, seconds. Discussion on the transfer.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Rivas?
Yes. Okay.
Mr. Rudel, why don't you, you're the expert?
Okay, what is, what is Project, Project 56?
Special Ed.
Okay, all right. And the, the origin, origin code, what, what are, what are the origin codes? What does that represent? The, the 156, the 1561 on all these origin codes, what, what does that, what does that entail? What is, what does that, what does that mean?
So those are subsections of the department. So for example, if you look, look at the first page, the one for $70,000, 15328310, that's an org that houses FICA taxes within Human Resources. The one above it, 1626000 is a facilities account that holds supervisory positions. The 1541002 is a curriculum department account, which houses...
You have a second? Okay. Yes, you have to know?
The 1541002 is a curriculum department account. That is for the position of the Chief Academic Officer that remained vacant all year. The 15614002 is a summer school account. Summer school is obviously completed within this fiscal year, and it is a special ed summer school account since it's a 156. The 15612900 is a special ed added district tuition account. We actually have two special ed added district tuition accounts, a 562 and a 563. The determination as to what gets expensed there is based on the placement of the student. The 562 account is for students that go to CES or ACEs, whereas 563 are other added district placements. The 15328310 is, again, a Human Resources Department, which is unemployment insurance. The one below that, 15612200 is another...
What, what page are you on?
Uh, second page.
I think you're going a little too fast. Can you slow it down a little bit?
Sure.
Please?
Sure.
Okay. Now, the 56, 56 project code has to do with special ed?
Correct.
Okay. Now, on the, what is the difference between 564 and 563 on the object code?
562 and 563?
564 and 563.
563 is an added district tuition account. That is added district tuition for kids who might go to, let's say, High Roads or Winston Prep, an area like that.
Okay.
564 is an excess cost reimbursement. That is revenue that we receive for students that are, cost the district more than four and a half multiples of a student that is not special ed.
Okay, so is that a negative amount?
Yes, because it's a receipt of revenue.
Okay, so, so there's nothing should be coded to, sent to 564?
No.
Right?
Just the receipt of revenue that gets booked into the account.
Okay. Now, on the, on the $63,000, it says special ed summer school.
Correct.
Okay. Now, what, what identifies that as summer school? What numbers identify that as summer school?
The four, at the, at the end of the org code, the 4002.
The 4002?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, so it has nothing to do with the location of the school?
No.
Okay. Okay, now, special, special education school, that's, that's an, that, that expense, that expense, where do you get that description though?
So the special education summer school, so Project 56 houses anything that's related to special ed or per pupil services. That account for, with the 4002 at the end relates to summer school. For summer school for the fiscal year, that's the July through August that's already passed.
This is from July 2014?
Correct. So that money remained encumbered and unspent. So that money became, was under budget throughout the year, was left unencumbered, which is why we're recommending this use of funds, otherwise it would not have been spent.
Because there are still PPTs that have not been completed, and, and, and the summer, the summer programs haven't started yet.
Those summer programs would be in the next fiscal year because they would start in July 1.
So, okay, so the, the, the money that's coming out of the special school, some, summer school, how do you...
Is for the summer that...
Is for...
Is the summer that already completed.
That already completed?
Correct.
And what is currently now for what hasn't been completed? For the 20...
That will be in the next year's fiscal budget.
Okay, do you have an idea of what that amount is right now?
Um, I don't have it off the top of my head, but I could send it to you.
Okay, so then you know that the $63,000 can be used with no problem?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I, I'm concerned also about the aid of, of Object 122, that's the, the transfer of 30,000?
Yes.
Okay. Now, these aids are, are aids for, in the preschool, in the preschool area? Is that the birth to three?
No, they're aids throughout the district. In some instances, when we do budget for a vacant aid position, we budget at a group three step eight, the top step. In some instances, they're not hired at the top step, so you create a portion of salary savings. In some instances, that position may be filled by a substitute because they couldn't find a permanent person, or it might not have been filled at all. So these are accrued savings from those positions.
Okay, because the thing, it's, it's special education preschool salary account.
Correct.
So then who, who defines the, the description on the object? Because you have a set description on objects that are generated, I guess, from, from Genesis, or where is this generated from?
UNICEF.
Okay, so these numbers are generated. So you cannot, you cannot alter the object number?
No, you would have to change the chart of accounts to do that. And the state of Connecticut is currently underway of having a unified, unified chart of accounts.
Okay, so now, the, the code of, back to the code of origin, is there a chart or a listing on the code of, the, the, these codes, on the 4002s and then the 29...
Yes.
2900? Okay, so now the aids, that, these are aids from la, from last school year, from 20...
No, these, these are accrued savings from this school year.
From this school year?
From this school year.
That hasn't finished?
Correct. So if an individual is budgeted, as an example, at a group three step eight, their salary is a certain amount. But if they were hired, let's say, a group three step one, because they didn't have enough experience, there's a, there's a portion essentially salary savings within that position. Additionally, if a position is filled by a substitute, it starts to a substitute account as opposed to a personal employee account. So that creates additional salary savings.
So the other school, the other school placements, are they for the remainder of the school year?
Yes.
Okay, so these remainders, how do we know they will, will not be needing aids for these, for these other districts?
The money that's taken is essentially the money that would have been spent up until this date. So if an aide is hired next week, there's still funding in the account to pay them from May to June. If an aide is hired at a salary of $30,000, but they're hired in May, they're not actually gonna receive $30,000 from May to June, they're just gonna receive their paychecks from May to June.
So then where, where, where does the money come from, from the, from the ESY?
I'm sorry?
Extended school year? Because children who have IEPs...
That's summer school.
Have extended school years, it's not a summer school, it's an extended school year.
Extended school, right.
It's a 12-month break.
Correct.
So what, what coding is, is that on there?
The org code itself.
Yeah, where, where does, where does that get distributed?
Uh, well, there's extended school hours in a grant account, which would be separate from this. There's extended school year, or that is not something that we're recommending a transfer from.
But the school year is not over yet, so then where would the funding, where, where would the funding come to pay for children whose I, the, the school year has not completed? Where would the money and what object code would it come from if there is a need to fund these children?
For like an aide or for what specific item?
Well, whatever modifications or accommodations that these individual transfers, or we need to transfer that we cannot provide service for here...
Well, there's still funding in the account to provide services from May to June. We're not taking out the funding so that we wouldn't have potential funding for something that might happen in May to June. We do do things on a cash basis, so this cash has not been spent, and otherwise, since these months have already passed, they can't be spent.
Okay, I just have, I just have a concern, I just have a concern, like now you have the social security account, the social security account for, for, for which, for which sections, for which departments?
So social security account is all housed within the Human Resources Department of the budget. So that is the 6.2% for social security and the 1.45% for Medicare that, that we as an employer have to pay for employees. So as an example, the Chief Academic Officer that we mentioned. When we budget for a Chief Academic Officer, we also have to budget for the FICA taxes associated with that position. If that position hasn't been filled, not only do you have accumulated salary savings from the actual position salary, but you also are not paying that FICA tax that's applicable to that budgeted salary. So that plus other positions that remain vacant, whether they were the mechanical maintenance supervisor position, we had a clerk position as an example, some aide positions as an example, those positions accumulated FICA tax savings because they weren't filled, nobody was in those positions.
Okay, so the 70, so, so, so we're transferring $70,000. So then if we end up filling these positions, are these positions already eliminated? So we will not be looking to fill these positions?
No, they could be, they could be filled tomorrow, but if they're filled tomorrow, you don't have to backdate the payment for the FICA taxes from July to April. You're only paying the FICA taxes for the actual salary that the individual earned. So if somebody starts May 1st as an example, they're only receiving their bi-weekly check from May 1st to June 30th, and we're only paying payroll taxes from May 1st to June 30th when that person's actually receiving a paycheck.
Okay, so then, if we do fill these positions, do we have to come up with another $70,000?
No.
So we don't need this $70,000 period?
Correct. Which is, that's one of the reasons why we recommend this.
Okay. Is it possible to request a list of, of, of excess, looking ahead? Is there a way of getting a list of how many, how much excess money we can use in different areas?
Sure. We're tracking, currently as of the end of March, we're tracking approximately 1% of the budget.
Okay. And I also wanted to, my last, my last comment was, is there any way to put a little bit more clarification as to, as to, because, you know, facilities, the 126 is facilities, facilities of what? You know, like what area of facilities?
It's a vacant supervisor position.
Okay. Can, can, can something read their vacant supervisor position? Like what position that is for? What department is that for? Because I have no idea what, what, what position are we referring to? What vacant position are we referring to?
Sure.
Because, you know, it's, it's...
We can increase the description on the bottom of the...
Because this is, this is a lot of money.
It is.
This is a lot of money that we're constantly transferring from, from, you know, to accommodate a, a certain obligation that we have. Because I, I believe that for special ed in general, what happens to, to the, the federal funding that we receive on the IDEA? What is happening with the money that we're receiving from on the federal level?
So we do receive money for IDEA, it's about 1.9 million dollars. That pays for some teachers, some psychologists, it pays for a portion of one of the special ed supervisors, it also pays for things like ABA therapists that are contracted to the, It also pays for things like ABA therapists that are contracted to the school district, and then various supplies and equipment that are purchased by the special ed department.
Okay, I think we should, I'm sorry, I think we should just look into how we can save this amount of money by having, accommodating, being able to accommodate our students here, be it through professional development, maybe sending some of our own teachers to do more co-teaching, or more along the lines of we need social workers, guidance, whatever it is that we need. Because, you know, this is, I need to make sure, are we tracking the data? Is this helping the students? Are we progressing with these students on this level?
That's something the special ed department would have to answer, I would be able to answer that.
Okay.
Brian?
Thanks, Chairman. I don't know if this is required. The third sentence in this paragraph on this topic...
Is that in the cover memo?
Yeah, dated April 21st. I don't have a page number. It's from Ms. Roodel. So, I believe the third sentence needs to be changed to indicate that the FICA savings are due to these vacant positions plus other vacant positions? Right? Because this amount far exceeds that of the positions that we're transferring funds from. So, to more accurately reflect, I mean, the math on $458,000 less $100,000, $358,000 at FICA plus is far less. It's about $27,000, not $100,000. So, this $100,000 is being transferred from multiple vacancies, not just these. Okay. And I would just point out, too, to Ms. Rivas, your comments, we can do better. This is $57,000 per child that we're spending. So, maybe we can do better on that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Ms. Mosby?
Hi. Couple of months, I've been coming to this table, and I've been asking to have the special ed person to at least meet at some kind of meeting, so we can get a handle on all of the special ed spending. Because we were here before, it was $600,000 one time, and now we're back here for another $500,000. And I'm hearing that we're taking it from all these different accounts, like you're taking probably what's left over from the chief academic officer account, a position that we haven't filled yet, and that saving of $70,000. And we're just going through this process of this pay-to-play, of trying to find money and so forth. And in general, if we could sit here and start looking at all these extra, excess money that we have to keep, you know, adding to one particular, you know, place, then maybe that could help us eliminate where we have to go and try to figure out how we can support pay-to-play, how we can support, you know, other things in the system. Because I said last meeting that I would like to see more of where the middle schools are getting some help with their arts, because I'm for arts, I'm for athletics, I'm for all that stuff, and I'm a strong person for special ed. But it just seems like we're getting out of hand, because I keep asking over and over again, can we have someone come in here and give us a breakdown of what's really going on? I'm not trying to knock the person, but I need to find out what is actually going on, because we keep coming back to this table two or three months later, asking for another $500,000, $600,000, $700,000. I need to know what I'm actually sitting here, you know, approving. So, if we can try to get that in, and I agree with Ms. Rivas, that these codes can be a little bit better. And, you know, just to rush through it, it's not going to help us. I need to have a better understanding of what we're actually approving, because this is a lot of money.
Any other questions, comments? Ms. Rivas?
Okay. Mr. Meek stated it would be a little more clarifying, because according to the attached memo that has it, it just talks about salary savings, that the money is going to be used, transferred from salary savings, these are specific, vacant positions, FICA tax to vacant positions, special ed, summer school. When all of the transfers here is a total of almost half a million, coming from Object Code 111, teachers, 562 special ed tuition, 250 unemployment compensation, 122 aides, 126 non-affiliated. Non-affiliated to what? So, this object code says non-affiliated. The code, Object 240, social security, 112, central administration support team. I mean, how does that, you know, these are areas of concern to me, central administration support team. Is it that, the area that's coming from, will we be impacted or affected in any other way? You have Code Number 690, other supplies, other supplies that supply where? What part of the district does this supply? Because I see that we need to accommodate, these are desperate times, we need to make sure that our children are supported and their resources are given to them. By law, we have to do that. But I mean, what happens if next month, before the school year's over, you have a lot of meetings going, PPTs now? If what happens if we have more out of this? This is just eight children. If we have 10, let's say we have 10 children that are in dire need and need particular schools to accommodate them. These schools are extremely expensive. Now, look at all of the different areas. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 areas of objects from the budget that we had to take money from to meet this. What happens then if we need 10 next month? Where would the money come from? You know, I just want to make sure that then we're not in a budget situation where we have to cut programs and cut a position and cut, you know, I need...
We are still tracking, one of the reasons we include the monthly financial statements is to track expenditures year-to-date. We are still about 1% under budget year-to-date. If additional placements are made by the Special Education Department between now and June, that will result in additional expenses, and we will look through a variety of accounts that are unencumbered and have available balances to make recommendations of transfers. But it wouldn't be a result of eliminating a program for a month. We target, one of the reasons we target multiple accounts is so that we can target unencumbered available balance of funds, so that we don't have to halt a program, or we don't have to eliminate a person mid-year. So, there's a lot of different avenues that you can go through when you look through the chart of accounts to accrue that type of money. It's one of the reasons why we have multiple accounts listed here. Rather than just picking one account and having the whole $500,000 come out, where maybe you'd have to eliminate a person, or a program, or whatever it might be, accumulating savings from multiple different accounts to come up with this dollar amount that's needed because those placements were made by special ed.
Okay, I just want to finish up what I just started. I just want to make sure that we're not, I want to provide the best service that we can to the people in the community, with the children that are in such a dire need. Now, if we pinpoint, why is it that we need to have this expense to begin with? Then we wouldn't have to be repeating, repeating this over and over again without trying to find some type of solution. And why is it that we need that? Not only from special ed, so we need to have more from special ed. What can we do as a board? So, where are we failing? Where do we need to assist? That, you know, we need to have a better explanation of what's being done. There was a lot of problems with out-of-districting.
As to why they're outplaced, that would have to be answered by either curriculum or special ed. I can't, I'm not a part of the PPT process, I can't.
Okay, well, I would like to request the Chair, Ms. Lyons, if this could be maybe referred to curriculum, or I don't know where we could refer it to, so we can investigate this further, if that's possible?
Well, I think it's probably more appropriate to refer to finance, since what you're focusing on is the cost element of it. We did get a detailed report on the status of special ed a couple of months back, particularly in relation to changes being made to address the issues that have been brought up in the crack report. But, you know, we didn't look into the financial aspects of it. I think that's probably more appropriate for the finance. I would note, just for the record, that in the budget for next year, we've proposed adding 22 additional positions to the budget in the special ed area, specifically to start addressing this issue. That, you know, it's been historically, Norwalk has had very high costs for out-of-district placements going back at least 20 to 25 years. This is a long-term reality in Norwalk. And Dr. Rivera, in the decision that we approved in January, really started taking the first steps to try to address this. You know, you're in sort of a catch-22 when it comes to these special ed situations, because in order to bring more of the students in-house, you have to be able to invest the money to improve the internal operations, which requires an expenditure of money. And a lot, I think for a lot of years, the school system just didn't have the money necessary, you know, we'd have to cut something else out dramatically to pour more money into special ed, to try to get us over this hump, to try to get more kids able to stay in the system. And with the 22 positions that we're creating in the next budget, we're finally taking a big step in that direction. But, you know, this is a problem that's been here for 25 years, and it's not something that we're going to be able to correct in one budget. This is a five or seven-year process, I think, of trying to correct it. And, you know, these individual placements here, you know, it's important to keep in mind something, which is that sort of uniquely among things that cost us money, we don't control special ed expenditures. If a PPT process mandates that a student be provided with education outside the school district, we can't stop that, okay? For whatever reason, the federal government, in its infinite wisdom, decided that special ed expenditures are more important than anything else the school system does, ever. And so, you know, if we had to shut down half the schools in order to have enough money to spend on special ed, we'd have to do it. Fortunately, we've been able to manage our budgets well enough in recent years not to face draconian problems like that. But when these expenditures come up, uniquely of all the expenditures that we face, we don't have any choice but to comply. We can decide whether to maintain after-school programs, or whether to add enrichment programs, or things of that sort. We can decide whether to hire staff, fire staff, make any other kind of adjustments that we want to make in a budget, except with special ed. And here, when those PPT processes come up with an IEP that says this person gets an out-of-district placement, they get it, and we have to fund it. And the challenge to the school district is to improve our own provision of special ed services, which, as I said, we're taking the first steps to do with this coming year's budget, so that the reasons that these PPT committees are saying this person needs out-of-district placement gradually go away. So, it's a long-term problem, it's going to take a long-term solution. We're taking the first steps towards it now, and unfortunately, like I said, when expenditures like this come up, it's not, it's an uncontrollable part of our budget.
Ms. Mosby? Then Brian, and then back to Ms. Rivas. Ms. Mosby?
Right, going back, I understand what you're saying, but going back to, I asked a couple of months ago if we can try to get in a room or have someone come in, so we can go over this, because that way we can sit here and see what's really going on. Sometimes you can sit here, and if there's a solution that we can work out internally, it could probably help with the expense of going, you know, outside. And I asked, you know, a couple of times for someone to come in, so that we can go over this. I'm hoping that this time, that this will take place. And until that happens, I mean, I'm all for supporting kids and everything, but I'm going to sit here on this, when the vote time comes, I'm going to abstain from this vote, because I don't have enough knowledge or information that I asked for in order for me to sit there and say, let's move on with it, especially after I've asked a couple of times to get that information.
Okay. Can I address Mr. Roodel? Thanks for helping me to understand this. It's a few short weeks to get over a huge learning curve. So, the $57,000 per student that you're requesting for the transfer, what period of expenditure does this cover? Is this from April through June?
It's about April through June, yeah. It's not even a full year.
Okay. So, on an annual basis, you're talking about $225,000, $228,000 per student?
The tuition per student can range anywhere from $40,000 to $200,000.
Okay, so, but just for my arithmetic, it's $57,000 per student from April through the end of June?
Correct.
So, on an annualized basis, I'm doing quick math, it's $228,000 per student?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
And now, back to Ms. Rivas.
Yes, okay. I just want to, as a board, I know that the finances, there's certain things that we just cannot change. But I remember asking, I don't know how many years ago, many years ago, and many meetings ago, if it's possible to have some kind of data, because we're supposed to be data-driven, some type of data that monitors this, like children that are out of district, a lot of children under the 13 classifications, it's because of socialization skills, it's because of not being included, it's because of relating to other peers. There's a big, I know there's a big percentage of students that are all related to that particular thing. And I believe that as a board, if we're bettering the school district, and bettering the lives of children, and we're making an impact, I think that maybe we should take the time out, as a board, brainstorm, sit together, think out of the box, and say, okay, maybe the special ed department can give us some information as to, all these children are being outplaced out of district because CES has an excellent resource on socialization skills? Or something that maybe we can handle? Because maybe the out-of-district could be part-time, part-time they could be in district, and half-time they can be there on the services that we cannot provide. But this is not something, okay, it's been going on years and years. But Norwalk Public Schools has come a long way. There's been a lot of changes. It's not like it's going to be like that forever. And, you know, I appreciate, Ms. Lyons, what you said, there's certain things that you just can't change. But as a board, I think there's a lot of difference we can make by sitting down. Maybe we could bring in under information and reports, and maybe we can get input from the public as well. And the public can say, well, I have these certain ideas, and maybe together as a community, we could discuss it. Because we want to have all children succeed, all children have to reach their goals and prepare them for life and career, and all of those good things that as parents we want for our kids. So, now, you said $57,000 a year? Okay, for each child, but each child is individual, or whatever was said before, the tuition. Now, since each child is individual, and they each have a different IEP, maybe that's not so exactly, because then they would be exactly the same children. So, if you're spending $57,000, let's say the kid needs speech therapy three times a week instead of once a week, that child's tuition is going to be higher than the other child, it's not $57,000.
Correct.
So, then if you're specifically saying, you're specifically saying that it's fifty...
It averages, the $57,000 is an average of the $458,000 for the eight students for the remainder of the year. The cost per student varies based on the number of outplacements that special ed makes throughout the year. Some range as low as $40,000 for a year, some can go as high as $200,000 a year. It really depends on the individual student.
Okay, because we just transferred a couple of months ago for ABA and special ed teachers, speech therapists, I think we had OT or PTs, we had some speech therapists, some social workers specifically to handle this. Now, we also did out-of-district, it was also out-of-district students. I do not recall the number amount, I don't know if it's these same eight children, or it was...
No, these are an additional eight children over and above the present.
Additional eight children, all right. So, the money that we transferred was in-house, though? It was for therapists that we...
For consultants that were hired to work within the district.
To work within the district?
Correct.
So, can these people have been used in district for some of these eight transfers?
That's a question that the special ed department would have to answer, whether or not those individuals...
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Chairman?
Mr. Meek?
Last question for my information. These, to you, Mr. Chairman, these are federally mandated programs? And these are mandated by legislative action or by executive action?
Legislation.
This is, so this is from our congressmen and our senators?
Yeah, this is the...
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, this legislation was passed back in the 70s?
Yeah, well, now it's IDA.
You know, when it was passed, Congress, knowing that it would be a very expensive program, pledged to provide the funding to support it. And I think now they probably provide about 15% or 20% of the funding to support it. So, as with many of the other things that we have to do, it's an unfunded mandate. The mandate comes and the funding doesn't show up, so we have to come up with it from our own resources. Thank you.
Originally, when it was passed by the federal government, it was called Public Law 94142, Gerald Ford was president, and when he signed the bill, he indicated that the goal of the federal government was to provide 35% of special ed costs that paid for by the federal government throughout the country. And we're no, that was, how many years ago? 30, 40 years ago? And I think federal share of special ed costs, I know, is well below 20%, with a promise of 40 years ago, they'd be, they would be at 30% nationally. So, there is state money that's now part of ECS that is factored into our reimbursement formula, but the heavy load of special ed really still falls on the local community, even though the mandates are basically federal with some interpretation by the state. formula, but the, the heavy load of special ed really still falls on the local community, even though the mandates are basically federal with some interpretation by the state.
1975.
1975, yep.
Forty years.
Ms. Mosby.
Are the 504 and the IDA both within the transfers, or they're mixed in?
I'm sorry.
504 status and ID, IDA, are they both within the transfers?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
So these are only just for.
No, these are, the IDA is considered a brand, it's in a special revenue fund.
Right.
This is just local, factored.
So just local, okay, all right, thank you.
All right.
That's it?
That's it. All right, motion is to approve the transfer of $458,000 with the individual items in the, in the packet, all in favor of the transfer, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, all opposed. Abstentions, one, two, three, four. So, five in favor, four abstentions, motion carries, and transfers are approved.
I think Shaw.
Will we go over the special ed, will we have someone come up and talk our, you know, that's.
To a committee.
Well, I, I think we talked a couple of months ago about it going to the finance committee, because this was a budgetary concern, so my, my hope would be that the finance committee can set that up with the special ed director.
So then we need that, the members who have to, who are interested have to attend the finance committee meeting, is that how we use?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, if there's any members, other than the finance committee, who want to get, attend that meeting, of course, all of our meetings are open to all members at all times. All right, next item on the agenda is item 6.3, approve policy 9325 bylaws of the board meeting conduct. Chairman, I entertain the motion to approve the resolution. Ms. Kessimus moves, Ms. Keyes seconds. Ms. Keyes, chairman of policy, I know we reviewed this at the last meeting, but just.
We did review it. If we look at number five, where it's highlighted, or actually it's outlined, there are just some changes that we discussed several times as a committee. We brought it back, we approved it for the policy committee, we brought it back here for further discussion, and now it's just approval to make a policy at this point.
Okay, any discussion? We'll proceed to vote, all in favor approving the policy amendment to 9325, please indicate. And that is unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Lyons, I just wanted to add, I didn't want to be redundant reading it over again, we've already discussed it during our last meeting, so.
Yeah.
I'm glad it went through and was approved.
Okay. All right, next item is approved designation of April 26 to May 2 as Week of the Young Child. Chairman, I entertain the motion to approve. Ms. Kessimus moves, second, Ms. Harris, second. Any discussion? Okay, I think I'll, this is relatively short, I'll just read it, so we have it in the record. Week of the Young Child, Norwalk Board of Education is proud to recognize the week of April 26 as the Week of the Young Child in Norwalk, an annual event sponsored by the National Association for the Education of Young Children. This observation celebrates our youngest learners. Today, we know more than ever about the importance of the early years of shaping learning and development. The strategic plan adopted last year by Norwalk Public Schools recognizes this in several of the goals we have set, including a focus on making sure that all children are ready to enter kindergarten, and ensuring that Norwalk students are on track for reading under the learning expectations by grade three. Pre-K programs at Norwalk Public Schools currently serve more than 200 children, with more than 920 kindergarten students, the population of young learners in our schools is significant. The teachers and staff who are charged with this age group are doing very important work. We greatly appreciate all their talents and commitments. By recognizing the Week of the Young Child, Board of Education joins with others who are marking this week with a variety of events. Those organizations include the City of Norwalk, Norwalk Early Childhood Office and Early Childhood Council, Norwalk School Readiness Providers, Norwalk Public Library, and the United Way of Fairfield County. Events for the week include family game nights, storytimes, free books, free admission to the Maritime Aquarium, and more. Norwalk Public Schools' website has more information about these events. We encourage all families to take advantage of the opportunities that will be available through the week. All right, all in favor of approving the resolution, please indicate. And that is unanimously approved, thank you very much. All right, we will now move to information reports, back to you, Mr. Rudel. March 2015 Financial Monthly Report.
So we've closed out the first three quarters of the fiscal year. Through March, we've expanded $108.9 million against an adjusted budget of $168.4, so we've spent 64.7% of our budget. When factoring in one-time expenses such as severance payments, the facility utilization study, which is encumbered, but the cash hasn't actually been paid yet, and the NFT accrual, we are at about 74%, so about 1% of the budget.
Okay. Any questions on the report? Okay, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is committee and representative reports, let's see, we'll start with Mr. Varvis, still sort of waiting on.
No, we actually do have an agreement that I, you might even have in your folder. This is the food service workers, this is the last union contract we had to settle, and that might, you might have it there in a folder to sign, I haven't seen the final.
I have not seen, I have not, I don't have it here, but.
It's been agreed to, and I know the attorneys set something here, so.
Wow.
It's, it's basically.
Cleared the entire deck.
Issue was on, we were changing for a number of the members of that union, we do pay health insurance, and we wanted to put them on an HSA like everybody else, like all the other unions, and it just took them a while to appreciate what an HSA was and what, you know, what the structure meant, and how it's funded, and how the mechanics of it worked. And so, once we kind of got them comfortable with that, eventually it all came together.
Okay. Wow.
We do, you know, we will be starting with the NFT, the National Federation of Teachers, that contract is up June 30th, and there's a very set process and a timeline that, you know, will be getting underway in the coming months.
Okay, well done clearing the deck of everything, now you get to start all over again with the next thing.
Excellent.
All right, Ms. Keyes, policy, you, you're going to have a lot on your plate here.
We do. Very constructive, productive meeting tonight. I want to personally thank Mr. Dedona for all of his hard work as far as the outdoor recess guidelines. We had put together a committee, which we had discussed, makeup of, which was made up of parents, staff, teachers, principals, assistant principals, and it's really been, and I've mentioned this before during meetings, a real hot button as far as our outdoor recess guidelines. The committee met twice, they came back with their recommendations, and Tony presented that tonight to the policy committee. As a group in policy, we had a hearty discussion about it, and we also agreed with their recommendations, so it'll be brought back to policy again to be written up. We'll bring it to the full board for discussion, and then the following meeting, hopefully we can have some action and have an actual policy in regards to outdoor recess, which is really critical and quite important. I also wanted to mention, anytime for any of our committee meetings, it's always open to the public, general public, anytime that you, anybody from the public that'd like to attend any of these meetings, you're more than welcome to come. In addition to that, we had Ralph come, and he did speak about information technology policies, so we're kind of touching on that. We did discuss bring your own device, again, it's in, it's infancy right now as far as discussing it in the board, Ralph will be coming back again so we can have further discussion on several technology policies that will be coming down the flank.
Okay, and now you got the whole pay-for-play.
Pay-for-play, yeah, we have a lot going on.
Activity fees.
For the next, you know, six months or so.
Okay, good. All right, just curriculum, we will be meeting this Thursday night to go over proposed Common Core materials for world languages update and social studies, and we will also, at our May meeting, we'll be meeting with our science director on coming developments in the science curriculum, and we'll also be looking at review that's been ongoing of high school scheduling issues. Ms. Kessimus.
The only thing to report, facilities, we're trying to put a meeting together for Monday, May 3, to discuss NACC.
Okay.
And athletics spring season is in full swing, get out there and support our teams.
Okay. Ms. Rivas, you had a question?
Yes, it was about the curriculum, I wanted to, because it was mentioned during public comments that there was a shortage of books, textbooks and bookside, is there?
That's not what he.
It wasn't about the books?
No, he was talking about, just wanting, my son is an advocate here, and he wants to just.
He wants more books.
Oh, he wants, I thought there was a shortage of books.
No, not textbooks.
Oh, okay.
And there are plenty of books, don't forget, just not in his room.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, and.
Can I mention something about that? Sure, you'd probably answer this even better than me, but all of our libraries offer programs for free and gently-used books quarterly, so has your son, have you ever participated or come to any of those?
Tons.
Tons, okay, so there's always great books.
She's library fan.
Okay, good.
We're a library.
Great.
Okay, Ms. Murray, finance.
Yes, our next finance meeting is May 13, but I would like to ask that the finance committee members, please notify me if you're not going to be able to attend the meeting. And we all know we have emergencies, but if it's not, if you would notify me in a timely manner, I'd be able to then be respectful of the time of the staff, as well as a recorder that we aren't paying to be part of that, especially when it comes to finances, important that we have a recorder. Yeah, so that's the only thing that I noticed that we've changed on, I need to be notified as soon as possible if you're not going to be able to attend. And I also will have pack put out in notice asking for any agenda items, so that can also be included as part of our agenda.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's see.
Ms. Harris.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Harris.
At the May 13 meeting, will we address the special ed, or will that be the following meeting?
I'm going to see the availability of the staff member, I don't want to make that commitment, okay?
Okay, all right, so for board member announcements, we'll start on this side, and any announcements?
None.
Okay, Ms. Rivas.
Yes, okay, I, I am requesting, I am requesting, if it's possible that on elementary school level, that they can send out to the parents exactly what these ratings are, if this is something that's new, then I think that the parents should have an understanding of, of what this means with these codes, the academic, the meeting standards, progressing standards, choice standards, and also maybe a type of explanation, what can they do about, if it stays consistent, like if it's a two, 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 what, what is the teacher, what are they doing to make that a three, or what are they doing to make it a four?
Mr. Dedona headed up the process of.
I'm sorry, can't see.
Yeah, they're heading up the process of redoing the report cards, so maybe you can.
Okay.
All the, all the progress, they're, they're called progress reports now, they're, they're no longer report cards. They were all based on the Common Core, they're based on our new journeys program, so as students progress, they will no longer be receiving fours like they were getting before, they're receiving ones and twos, and actually, a two is equal to a four in the past, because that meant that the child mastered the task. And you cannot master, master a task that was not taught yet. So therefore, what I am going to do is, I am going to speak to all of the principals to make sure that they did send out those, we put together a report on the new progress reports, and we did it in both English and Spanish. I would like to, you know, I'm going to ask the principals if they would review those with their parents again, and if we have to update that and make that clearer for the parents, we will do that.
Thank you, Mr. Dedona, thank you very much.
Can I jump on this topic? Just a point of clarification, I'll say this, you tell me if I'm right or wrong, so getting a two in November and getting a two in March, so the question being, what's the difference between a two and a two? Well, he's a two three months later, meaning he mastered three months more of skills, correct?
If you, if you look at, it could mean that the skills that they were taught, they received a two, they did not get a three in that, because maybe they didn't go beyond the skill, they mastered the, the skill itself.
Okay, again, but going back to a two, what's the difference between a two and a two? Well, timing suggest, isn't it timing, timing from November to March?
But see, these are skills that progress through, through the year, so you're taught, you're taught part of the skill for the first, first part of the year, you're taught the second part of the skill, and it's a progression of mastering that skill. So by the end of the year, you should have a four if you highly mastered that skill. But the whole skill isn't taught, the difference here is, is the way we're teaching and approaching it, the total skill isn't taught at one time.
Okay, I.
It's taught in a progression.
I understand, but the, the question that came before, the, the comments that came before the board earlier tonight, I wanted to know what the difference between a two and a two was, and I can understand the confusion. You haven't, in your mind, you haven't improved, I haven't gone from a B to a B plus.
It, it doesn't work that way.
I understand that.
It's not a report card.
What I'm suggesting is that, that's the kind of communication that needs to go out to explain that difference.
So I guess I, I need to ask the parents, did you get the?
We got a letter, we did.
It was like a three-page?
We did get that, I, my husband's, I, I was just, this is my husband's.
Okay.
But I asked and I found out, whatever. But I guess, because if you look at what it says, progressing towards standard, I just, I feel like that phrase says you're just not cutting it yet, you're, you're not, I understand what you mean.
Yeah.
But let's go back to my principal husband, because I'm feeling there's some expectations, he's unconvincing, so my poor son has been more, feels that this too much, and he didn't, you know, I just feel like this is.
So, I, you know what, what I will do is I'll have another explanation sent out, because these are standard-based, and you don't, the standard goes over the course of the year, you don't teach the standard, like the old way of teaching was, we taught you something from September to, you know, November, and you got a grade on it, well now it's just standard, it goes throughout the year. So you're not going to get a, you're not going to see a four until the end of the quarter if your child mastered it.
I, I don't recall seeing it, maybe, maybe an FAQ needs to go out, I mean, young Adam's about to join Mensa here, and his parents can't figure it out.
Okay. So what we can do is, and I'll, I'll send a copy to the board tomorrow, so that you all have a copy of it.
Yeah, I think, and what you got to do is, I think, Tony, is, is address it, not just technically, but colloquially.
Right.
Maybe you lead off by saying, you parents out there are used to seeing As, Bs, Cs, Ds.
The letter did say that.
Okay.
It did.
It was a good letter, but I can still, I have a question, so are you saying that the only thing I should be concerned about is a one?
No, what I'm saying is, if you, what I'm saying is, if your children are getting twos, even now, that, that, that two, if you were to compare it to the old system, is like getting a four, because they mastered that, that skill.
So a two is progressing towards standard? Right. Towards.
But the, you're standing, but the standard isn't going to be, the standard, no, but the standards will be completed by the end of the year, so if they haven't mastered that standard at the end of the year, and your child still has a two at the end of the year, that means your child didn't master the standard, because by the end of the year, that standard would have been taught, which is a new way of thinking, we, we didn't grade this way before.
I, I do, I can, that's all right, but, but so in November, I needed to know which of these twos I needed to say add more courage, I didn't get that.
Okay, so then I'll get that clarified in, in the letter that.
Do you have any?
I got, I, I understand what you mean.
Does a two mean different things at different times?
It's for teachers.
Because he's meant the standard, he, he's meant, no, what that really means is that as the standards progress, you don't, you don't teach the whole standard all at once, you teach it in progression. So by the third progress report that he's going to get, he will.
Okay, well, folks, all right, we're not going to do this all tonight, but Tony will work on, on getting the point made in a more understandable way. And I can, you know, I sympathize with your, with your child, you know, the, you see, I can imagine your husband saying, what the heck's with all these twos? I expect you to work hard, what are you, what are you doing? And you want the system to work and accomplish the Common Core objectives, but at the same time, we want it to be understandable for people. but at the same time, we want it to be understandable for people so they can perceive where their kid is and, and get a sense of where do we need to help him out, where, where is he doing fine, and just keep doing what you're doing. Okay, those are good points. Artie, any, any board member announcements?
Okay, my only announcement is I, I, I had the, it has nothing to do with the school system except that it's him. I had the great pleasure of attending the 20th anniversary of Mr. Kessamas' church where he's pastor, the Word Alive Church, which is really a lovely, very warm and inviting place with rock music as part of the presentation. You know, I come from Catholic churches where we don't get into the rock music stuff. But it was, it was really a delightful day, and I, I would just like to recognize Artie, who, you know, the best story that he told was when he, when he started this, this ministry, at his first sermon, he had three people attend, and he thought, well, you know, I'm, I'm getting there. And in his next sermon the next week, nobody showed up. But Artie didn't give up, and, and in a true piece of evidence of how important perseverance is, 20 years later, he has hundreds of parishioners, and I can testify from my own personal experience, a very enthusiastic base of people in your church, and I'd just like to congratulate you for sticking with that.
Anybody over in this direction, any board announcements? Yes, Mike?
In another position that I'm, I'm due for the Board of Ed. I'm our representative on the Board of CES, and if you recall, I did talk in January, the January 20th board meeting, that CES and the state of Connecticut are doing, have a lot of different efforts to change the way teachers, minority teachers are recruited. And really, the big push now is to entice or encourage locals, people who live here, to become teachers more than trying to get teachers from other areas, which have been the model. And anyway, I've been talking to the woman who's the Director of Professional Development Services at CES, a woman named Esther Baudewig, who's been intimately involved in this, and I've invited her to come to our next board meeting to talk about what those efforts are. I think already, you know, Bob Deluski and his team have been doing some of that, a lot of that, most of that. But we would do more, you know, try to do more on that front.
Okay, great.
I think, I think the statistic I read was statewide, you know, roughly 40% of the student body is, you know, represents one minority or another, and only less than 8% of our teachers are representing one of those minorities. So obviously, a good cause and one we want to follow.
All right. We will put that on the agenda for the next meeting. Thank you. Ms. Harris, anything?
I didn't, but now you. I'm, I'm still personally trying to understand this whole special ed. It's, it's a, for me, it's a very complicated process, but I just wanna let everyone know. We do have a community conversations program at the library that has dealt with special ed. We had four so far, May, the first Thursday in May will conclude the series. And it would be nice to have some board members come out. We had attorneys, speed, we've had the different agencies that have had results, not just fly-by-night agencies, come in and it's, it's a very difficult process to understand. There's a lot of components. And we're looking, we're thinking about continuing next year, so it would really be nice if people are really interested to have more people come out.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just say, I've been to a couple of them.
I'm sorry, Mike.
Yes, I'm sorry. No, no, but that's not why I bring you up, but I have to say, I learned a lot. And I, I have a child who does have some issues, more attention-related learning, but I've learned a ton. Especially, it was fascinating, a member actually of our staff, Maureen Ruby, and as well as, what's her name?
I forgot. Oh, I, her right hand, I know who you're talking about.
The famous person who runs.
Archie Gillis.
Archie Gillis, thank you, literacy pal. No, Archie Gillis, and it was fascinating, especially about dyslexia, which I had totally the wrong information about, and didn't realize that it's really has nothing to do with looking, but it's really with sounds. And English in particular has so many sounds, more than our alphabet has. Anyway, the whole thing was fascinating. I would highly recommend going to these lectures. There was one I really wanted to go to that had a conflict I couldn't, about kind of what your rights are. And I will go on the record that we only had a five oh four, and that was the biggest mistake. I should've gotten an IP. And I would encourage all parents, and I want to be on the record, don't wait till you get to high school because they don't care. And it was a serious problem. So I spoke in my piece, but I really recommend going to these. I think it was a real asset that the library provided this information, and there was really, there was good attendance, and it was a really interesting cross-section of people who went to those meetings.
Looking forward to the finance, I'm sorry, looking forward to the finance meeting, where we can learn a little more from the financial.
All right.
I just wanted to.
I'm sorry, Brian.
I just wanted to thank the board for bringing me on, and I want to thank the staff, especially Mr. Rudel and Pat Rivera for helping to get me over the learning curve. Thank you. Which I'm still not over, but.
Ms. Murray, then Ms. Rivas?
Yes, as we did the memorial for Mo last board meeting, which I just think the staff did, and it was done well. We also, some of the board members were able to attend the dedication room at the New York Public Library for Judy. Rivas and sister and, and her niece and nephew spoke. Very touching, the fact that Judy did serve as Board of Ed and contributed now to the Common Council, and into the Board of Ed, and to the city. So, but it was a very nice dedication.
Ms. Rivas, you had something?
Yeah, I did, but I forgot.
Oh, okay.
Your wife's sister. I forgot. I attended the ceremony for, for Judy Rivas as well, and it, it, it was very moving. And I, I believe, like, we have a lot of staff that's on board with us that work in New York Public Schools, and, you know, it's just a shame sometimes that, you know, you get to know what a person's impact is when that person passes away. And I think that, you know, we, we do have a spotlight, we should, we, we should recognize a lot of the hard-working people that are, are within the New York Public School systems, and, and, and try to see how we could reach out to see exactly what, what these employees of New York Public Schools offer and what they do. I mean, if, if I, the dedication to Mo and everything, there are a lot of things, and it's coming from New York, I'm not a, a New Yorker, and I learned so much. And there were even things that my sister did as well in the city that I was not aware of. And I just, I just feel that people do need to be recognized and, 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 and have the impact that they have on a community. And it's just a shame that you know about it when they're gone, and they weren't present to say, hey, this is what you did for me. So, so I think that we should bear that in mind, and, and somehow include, include staff and, and parents that have made an impact in their schools, and, and, and recognize these people. And, and with that, I, I want the board to consider also, maybe we should have like a dedication wall at each school. This parent participated in this and impacted our school, to recognize the individual people that play such an important role in our lives, in our children's lives, and that's it. Thank you.
Ms. Rivas, can I just add something to you?
Yes.
I agree with you 100%, and I think for spotlight, I think we've tried to switch it around, not just, I mean, we want to honor schools, we want to honor students, we want to honor staff, any parents, I mean, it's open. I mean, but we will know some of this information, list, some of the principals, some of the staff will let us know. I mean, it's hard to know, we kind of have an idea of board members, but we're not in the schools every day to really figure out some of the people that really should be spotlighted unless we hear about the information. So I think it's open. I mean, I think it's wonderful what you just said, and I agree with that. We just need to have more people coming, even if it's somewhere really special in the school, and a principal can call me or, or call Brenda and say, you know, I really want to spotlight this person. We're open for that, and I think that we should be doing more of that.
Oh, and I forgot to mention one thing. There's an activity on Friday at Bryan McMahon High School. There's the talent show for the Best Buddies Program, and, and, and that's their talent show, their musical. And, and these children practice hard, and, and Newark High School children come in, and, and, and these are children that are in all sorts of, they're in our, our other population. And, and they have some wonderful performances, they try very hard, and it would, it would mean the world to them, I think, if the board can attend. It's on Friday, I, I believe it's, I, I think it's at 6 o'clock. And, and also, and, and if as many people can come and, and, and also purchase refreshments, because with the refreshments and the stuff that they bake, and their parents bake, they use it for activities that they have in the school, for socialization, for being best buddies, and they're peer mentoring things that they do. So it's very important that the community, and if Brenda, if there's a way or someone could, could make it public so, so we can fill that house and, and support all of our children, all of our children there on Best Buddies, and you, you will really enjoy the show. And I think it's, it's worth it, and it's this Friday. And maybe if you could just go for 10 or 15 minutes, so then you can see the dedication these children have to making you happy on stage. So I, I, if you, if you can all go, I'd appreciate it. It's a nice, nice gesture for them, except Bryan McMahon.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll now move on to approval of the minutes. These are the minutes for April 7, 2015. Chair would entertain a motion to approve. Mr. Kessamas moves. Second, Ms. Keys. For corrections, I had a couple myself. Please note in attendance that we have Brian Meek with us.
Scratch off Jack, right?
Yeah.
Oh, it still says Jack. Jack comes off, Brian goes in. Then, on page four, a third of the way down, I wish we had $52 million for the security enhancements, but alas, it's only $2 million for the security enhancements. And then on page five, at the bottom, it says, Mr. Connolly, welcome. Mr. Meek, that's actually Mr. Lyons, who did that. And Meek does not have an S.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's singular and Brian with a Y. That's my mom's fault, so.
All right. Any other corrections?
I would just say, on page four, we're, we're, we're going through a review of everything we've done. Where they took up establishment P-Tech with IBM, IB at Bryan McMahon. The IB program is under investigation at Bryan McMahon. It's not investigation. I'd say International Black Order Program is, is being implemented, is being introduced, is preparing to introduce an IB program at Bryan McMahon.
Okay.
And then under parental involvement, I'm not sure what USC is, but I didn't, I don't think that's really.
Oh, I think that's use.
Use.
The word use.
The word use, U-S-E. All right, anything else? Hearing none. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the minutes as amended, please indicate. And that is unanimous. Thank you. All right. Chair would entertain a motion to go into executive session with the purpose of discussion and possible action on non-renewal of a non-tenured teacher contract. Mr. Kessamas moves. Ms. Mosby seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? And it's unanimous. We're in executive session. This is a short one, so I'm not gonna, we'll just, as soon as the room clears.
Recession, Mike, Mike, no recess.
Two minutes.
How long I think we're gonna be?
Five minutes.
Okay. We're back in regular session. The chair would entertain a motion to add an item to the agenda to take action on approval of non-renewal of the contract of non-tenured teacher Jennifer Canada. Is there such a motion? Ms. Rivas moves. Is there a second? That's Mr. Barbous' second. So all in favor of adding this item to the agenda, please indicate. That is unanimous. Chair would entertain a motion to approve the following resolution. Resolved upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools that the Board of Education approves that the contract of employment of Jennifer Canada not be renewed for the following year upon its expiration at the end of the 2014 to 2015 school year, and that the Superintendent of Schools is directed to advise such person in writing of this action. Is there such a motion? Mr. Barbous moves. Is there a second? Ms. Rivas seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll proceed to a vote. All in favor of approving the motion, please indicate. One, two, three, four, okay, eight, all opposed. Abstentions. One abstention, Ms. Mosby. Motion carries 801. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kessamas, is there a second? Ms. Keys, all in favor. Motion carries, and the meeting is adjourned. You abstained on adjournment? Okay, one abstention on adjournment.
Want to stay here?